Meeting, and we thank you for the things that you're going to do through us at this time. We ask this in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Cronin?
Here.
Councilmember Brazel?
Here.
Councilmember Ehlmann?
Here.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Schneider?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
As just for the record, I'd like to note that we're going to be conducting this meeting pursuant to the Declaration of Emergency, and the public will be participating through electronic means and through written comments that have been submitted consistent with the agenda, and those will be incorporated into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. First on the agenda is some conditional, two conditional use permits, starting with Bill Number 4835.
Bill Number 4835, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 20-01, for one, outdoor storage of boats and recreational vehicles, and two, storage of construction equipment and heavy machinery, new and used, to TMM Wentzville LLC property owner.
You will...
This is where we would invite Robert Myers, who is participating through WebEx. And Mr. Myers, are you there?
I can fill in on it if you want.
All right. Mr. Myers, are you there?
I think he's coming up.
Is he the applicant?
No, he's Planning and Zoning Division Director.
Oh, that, Mr. Myers, I'm sorry.
I talked to Robert today. I can fill in on it if you want on it.
I think it's going to be by audio only. I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure.
Yes.
Hey, is that Robert?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Robert, can I swear you in?
Yes, you may.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Mr. Myers, could you fill us in on Bill Number 4835, please? Yes.
Yeah, CUP 20-1. This is a conditional use permit. Technically, it's two separate conditional use permits that are both very closely related. Both include outdoor storage. The property in question is on Josephville Road, extending between Highway A and Josephville Road, basically across the street from General Motors. The property is already zoned in the county industrial. They're not seeking to use utilities such as sewer or water that would necessitate annexation, so it would be, the uses would be in the unincorporated county, but the property does join the city of Wentzville, such that should they ever need sewer or water service, they would have to abide by whatever terms the city of Wentzville would require. The two conditional uses that are proposed include about six and a half acres. There's a concept plan that's attached along with this application that they would need to abide by. One thing you might note is that they're proposing gravel surfaces for outdoor storage. This is quite typical for heavier outdoor storage. That involves more than just typical vehicles, and for outdoor storage where things set for long periods of time. But we would control dust through the site plan in requirement that any problematic dust be addressed through applying calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride, or soybean oil, or some sort of treatment that would solve the dust problem. Conditional use permits, there's three criteria that we always use for conditional use permits, and three considerations for us here tonight. And we may impose conditions to ensure that the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare, will not injure the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity, or the aesthetic or scenic values of vicinity, nor substantially diminish or impair property values, and will not impede development and improvements of surrounding properties. For note, the county did receive a letter from the city of Wentzville with some observations and a request for pavement, but again, what we're proposing is to address any dusts, or that dust be controlled by the measures that I spoke about before. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this on March 18th, and after concluding the public hearing, recommended by a vote of six in favor and no votes against, that the county council approve these conditional use permits with the three conditions that are included in your draft bill.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I guess the next step would be, do we have any questions of Mr. Myers? Mr. Cronin?
No questions.
No questions? Okay, yes.
Did he say, did he say the council approved it, or did he mean the planning?
He meant planning and zoning, yes.
Comments, Mr. Cronin?
I drove out to the site today, and I also spoke with Robert over the phone. And if you're going to find a good place, you have to find a better place for a storage yard for heavy equipment than this. Right next to it is the storage facility for Concrete Strategies, a large concrete company in the county. The other side, there's some storage of heavy equipment. I read Wentzville's comments, and it's not appropriate to do this with pavement, because when you turn a bulldozer around on pavement, you tear up the pavement. So where it's isolated enough, there wouldn't be any issues with gravel, with dust control. They will be adhering to the county's landscaping requirements, which was one of the things that Wentzville asked for. So I think Robert's done a great job making sure Wentzville is taking care of it. I think this is taking care of their concerns. It's a good location for it. There's no controversy in my district regarding it, so I see no reason why we wouldn't want to pass this.
All right, Nancy, we have a statement by the applicant. If the applicant is on... Is attached to our meeting. I understood that he was being connected in, so we may ask if the applicant is available.
Okay. If the applicant is available.
Yes, I'm in.
He's here.
This is Steve Lang with TMM Wentzville.
Okay, and I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
If he has any questions...
Could you give us a brief statement on the application that you want to make?
Hello?
Can you hear us, sir?
Are you able to hear us, sir?
Yes, I am. I can hear you.
Okay, do you have any comments that you'd like to share with us, or a brief overview?
No, I believe Robert pretty much took care of it all. I mean, it is definitely a project we would like to see happen. We've been sitting on the property for a few months now, and like you described, you know, our intention is not to, to just let anybody store something there. It's going to be mainly fifth wheel and travel campers, possible boats, but any dilapidated vehicles or equipment is not really something that we're interested in. And then the intention long-term for us is to bring our construction company's office out to that location, and build approximately about 10,000 square feet of office space, and then have some construction equipment set out back with containers. So that is our intent at the moment.
Okay. Does council members have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Public comment, we will have any speakers on this particular application?
And I have one received from Arnie Deanhoff, and his comment is, "I am highly opposed to the proposed conduct and proposed illegal violations of St. Charles County Council, my home county, and how it proposes to hold public meetings in violation of Chapter 610 in its entirety of the revised statutes of Missouri. No authority is granted to the council in Section 610021 of the statute." Bill Number 4835, CUP 20-01. He has seven comments. One, that a Type III berm be installed. Two, that a site-proof fence be installed. Three, a row of white pine spruces be planted. Four, no unlicensed vehicles be allowed. Five, no derelict vehicles be allowed. Six, no storage of parts be allowed. Seven, no sales or rental of vehicles be allowed. His recommendation would be to approve with amendments.
Okay.
Good thing we didn't think of that.
All right. Does council or staff have any questions for the applicant at this point?
No.
Okay, this concludes public comment on this conditional use permit.
For the applicant, we are finished with Bill 4835, and we will address it again on April the 27th for final passage.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't get voted on now? It gets voted on again at the end of the month?
That is correct. Tonight is strictly for introduction.
I understand, okay. And then, at this particular time, is that something that is set up through WebEx, or is that kind of in limbo at this point?
I, we are planning on connecting with WebEx if we are still under this Declaration of Emergency.
Understood. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Bye.
That was an offer too, I don't think.
Well, wait a second. He can, he can make an offer to waive the, you know, how we have some applicants who waive the special hearing process, and it expedites it a little bit, or do we not need to do that?
That's the stipulation agreement?
No.
That's what that is, if he signs it.
But you would still need to meet...
Yeah, we...
Oh, so it's, okay, okay, because I remember that. That's fine.
Would you tell him if he has any questions about the process to reach out to me, and I'll help him?
We will.
All right. Also, we have a conditional use permit, Bill Number 4836, and...
Bill Number 4836, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance, amending ordinance Number 17-070, granting conditional use permit, CUP 17-06, for rural recreational activities and facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other events to Edward and Tammy Barrio, property owners.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Could you give us a brief overview of Bill Number 4836?
Should I be sworn in first, or is it...
Once, once a evening is fine.
You're fine to go, Robert.
I'm fine, thank you. Okay, this application is a little bit different from the last in that this conditional use is, this would be an amendment to an existing conditional use permit that was granted in 2017. You may remember Valley Farms, that was the very first rural recreation wedding venue that was approved under our new ordinance. So in 2017, they were granted a conditional use permit to conduct weddings and other gatherings. So they're coming before you here tonight in order to request amendment of a couple of conditions that have been posed since 2017. The first would be to change the hours of operation just a little bit from 10:30. They requested from 10:30 PM to 11:00 PM, that wedding receptions, instead of 10:30 PM, they could go to 11:00 PM. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there was discussion back and forth between the applicant and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they both agreed upon 10:45 PM. So again, from 10:30 to 10:45 PM was what's before you now. Additionally, they're requesting to remove the restriction in terms of the number of, or which months weddings may take place in. So in other words, they could take place in any month, but on the same days of the week. And then also to increase the number, maximum number of people from 200 people to 250 people. And that was, as it was explained at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the weddings average about 200 people, but often, a little more than 200 will be invited, but not necessarily all those people will show up. So they may invite 210 or 220, but they may get 200. So as Mr. Barrio explained it, he's looking for a cushion so that he can stay in compliance with the maximum number of guests for the, for his conditional use permit conditions. We did receive communications concerning this, including one from a neighbor, Mr. Pressman, and he had a number of questions, but I will say the questions that he asked don't have to do with the conditions that are, that would be changed here. His question had to do more about enforcement of the other conditions that were in place here. There was one speaker who spoke in favor of Planning and Zoning Commission on March 18th, three letters of support and one letter of opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission, after the discussion with the applicant, voted six in favor and zero against, a recommendation that the county council amend the conditions for this existing conditional use permit as is provided in your, the bill that's before you tonight.
Thank you, Robert. Does council have any questions to Mr. Myers?
Was there an agreement? This is Nancy Schneider, Robert. Was there some sort of a discussion, I watched this online some time ago, about the fact that he was concerned that if one or two more people showed up, that there would be somebody out there counting people and making complaints? And was there any agreement to increase the number of wedding attendees or people there from 200 to 250?
Yes, what's in the bill that's before you would increase the maximum number of guests from 200 to 250.
Okay, that was my rep election. Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Cronin?
Just to recap, everybody, a couple years ago, the CUP was granted. This man put a lot of time, a lot of effort to place this a showcase. It's really a beautiful property.
I've been there.
Along with some of the comments we received, were comments from the neighbors, saying it's a joy to look over his place. He's very particular, very meticulous, and when he says, when he asks for 2 to 250, it's a reason because he won't go over 250. And the reason he's asking for, when he first applied, he didn't have public restrooms. He worked with Jared Agui, with community development, and got approved county public restrooms in, so he does have the additional restrooms. As far as the, he asked for 11 o'clock for a closing time for the music. That was something he negotiated out with the, with the planning zoning for 10:45. I'm fine with 11, if we want to give it to 11. And then the other thing is, besides that, he, before, he said he would only do weddings, 30 weddings a year, okay? And because it's really taken off, he's wanting to do more than that. And essentially, we put, he put some conditions on himself on the last CUP that were above and beyond anything we've done anywhere in the county, because he's the first one in that part of the county. But I can tell you, there's been no negatives, no problems. His neighbors are happy, people are happy, it's a pretty place, he does a nice job, so I'm fully in support of getting this through. He also intends to, he's also paid a significant amount of sales tax, he intends to hire more people, and that's something we could use in this county, so I think he's done a good job, and I think we ought to consider, strongly consider what he's asking for, okay?
Mr. Brazel?
If you guys remember this, there were, but he's done a fabulous job. I was opposed to it, actually, but because I wasn't for these wedding venues, but now he's doing such a wonderful job, and it's successful, I'm going to recommend to Joe that I'll make a motion to make it 11, because none of the wineries have to close at 10:45. That doesn't, it's not fair to this guy. I don't even know why it's 11, but I guess that's reasonable, and that's what it worked out with.
Yeah, and it's just for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So through the week, he's still shutting down early.
Okay, so if the proper procedure is, is I'll make a motion to carry it to 11 PM?
I'll second that.
Second?
Yep.
Okay. A motion to amend this, to change the time from 10:45, which is on the CUP, to 11 o'clock. Okay? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then the next point is, is why would we put a limit? I don't remember that, unless he, I think he was making agreements that were just way...
He did it because he really wanted to agree, be the nice guy, and try to make things out.
Right, but the limit, the fact that you don't, you can't be successful is ridiculous. Say you can only have 30 weddings a year, that is absurd. We should not put any limit on it. We can't say, oh, you don't want to cap someone's sales at this.
That's what, that's what the CUP changes, though.
Yeah, no, I know, but he, did he...
He wanted that, because he...
But we have it unlimited now, right?
Yes, that's, the new thing would be, he can do it as long as the weddings are on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday only, okay? So...
Well, what about week? What about holidays, like 4th of July, or something like that?
He's, he can do other events, but those events will end at 10 o'clock, okay? So then a little earlier, okay? So if he has a corporate meeting, for instance, on a Wednesday night, he'll be able to shutter down that. And Joe, just so you know, he's agreed to that, that's what he wants to do, so.
All right. Done, is the applicant available?
Mr. Barrio, are you available through WebEx?
Yes, we are. Hope you can hear us. My wife Tammy and I are here, and we are here to answer any questions or concerns you may have, but I think Mr. Cronin, you know, presented it quite well.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
Mr. Barrio, I'm sorry, before you continue, let me swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Barrio? I obviously was at the Planning and Zoning Commission when you came before us, and you did a great job of explaining the reasons for the changes, and there was, there was no opposition whatsoever on planning and zoning for what you were requesting?
No, again, we really have nothing else to add, other than we really love this business, and Mr. Cronin wrapped it up very well. All of our neighbors love us, we are constantly complimented on the place, we have all five-star reviews, and we're here to just address any issues or questions or concerns you may have.
Okay, thank you. Now, we do have public comment. Do we have any, anyone that wants to comment on this?
I have one comment from Arnie Deanhoff, and this is regarding, he's got four comments to be made on this bill number. Number one, no amplified music past 9:45 PM. Two, doors must be closed. Three, party must end by 10:30 PM. Four, we need to treat this venue as any one of the other CUP-approved sites. His recommendation would be to make all amendments to this bill.
Those are the only public comments that we have. Does anyone on the council have any questions for the applicant or staff? Seeing none, then we will close the hearing on this conditional use permit. Okay, all right. Okay, moving on. We have a public hearing on the vacation of a portion of Old Duello Road.
I have one speaker, Mr. Arnie Deanhoff, three comments. One, what is the actual value of the properties in question in the trade? Two, has there been a fair appraisal done? Three, refer to county auditor for recommendation. Last comment, recommend, his recommendation, refer to county auditor for review.
Okay. Does council have any questions on the vacation portion of Old Duello Road? Okay, seeing none, then we will end the public hearing on that particular subject. Next of all, we have public comments, and the public has been welcome to send their comments to us, and we will proceed to read the ones that we have received.
I have one from Thomas and Roberta Debray. They are the applicant for Bill Number 4837. Attention, St. Charles County Council, in regards to RZ 20-01, permit address 2949 West Meyer Road. My wife and I are requesting the rezoning of accounts T2001, 00008, 6760, 80A000, and the 11.33 acres of account number A964000366. We purchased the 11.33 acres as part of a 76.75 acre tract, along with adjoining 79.45 acre parcel in 1995. At that time, the property was zoned, as it is now, A1 agricultural, but with a three-acre minimum lot size requirement. Within the past 10 years, St. Charles County changed the requirement for dividing property within the A1 agricultural zoning district from three-acre minimum lot size to a five-acre minimum lot size. While inquiring into this change at the Planning and Zoning Department, I was told that the change was done in order to make septic systems more practical for certain areas of the county. The person went on to say that septic installations were not a problem in the areas I mentioned above. In fact, all of the adjoining properties to the south are on three-acre parcels within three-acre subdivisions. The 2030 master plan, as put forth by St. Charles County, projects the area as low-density residential, one to four units per acre. Our request to change to RR zoning, three-acre minimum lot size, fits well into that criteria. This zoning change would allow us to return to the original acreage requirement that was in place when we purchased the land in 1995. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public comments?
Yes, I have a comment from Arnie Deanhoff on COVID-19. Councilmembers, I am highly opposed to the proposed conduct and proposed illegal violations of the St. Charles County Council, my home county, and how it proposes to hold public meetings in violation of Chapter 610 in its entirety of the revised state statutes of Missouri. The reason to exclude me and my fellow citizens is not one of 18 reasons as allowed by 610.021 of the revised state statute. The county council, nor the county executive, have any right to violate any state law. I am very opposed to your illegal and poor decision of governmental policies in the county council meeting for Monday, April 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. This meeting, and not allowing members of the public that pay your hefty salaries, huge expenses, lavish medical benefits, and lifetime pensions, by arbitrary decisions without a vote of the council, in violation of Missouri state law and revised state statutes to deny access of citizens to be in an important governmental meeting of the county council. You are denying the right of all citizens to publicly testify, make public comments to the council, and to bring information, facts, and grievances to the attention of our elected officials. This proposed behavior is flat-out wrong and bad behavior. I disagree with the course of action and legal advice given by the county council or... given by the county councilor, John Watson. This is selfish, and keeping the public at bay from participating in our public governmental process. When you place council members, seven, the county executive, one, council staffers, two, director of administration, one, assistant directors of administration, two, county councilor, one, director of community, public health, and the environment, one, assistant directors of public health, two, staffers of the communications production staff, three to five, and other department heads, ten, head equals thirty-two, you are breaking your own imposed rule and emergency ordinance passed on Friday, March 20, 2020, have no gatherings of more than 10 people at a given location in any one room. Remember, you are no different than I or any other of our 433,000 county residents.
All right, are there any other public comments that have been sent in?
No further comments.
All right, that concludes public comments. Next up is the oral report from our county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said at the last meeting, all of our information is updated every day on the county website, and encourage anyone watching tonight to consult that on a regular basis. There is a, again, I want to just thank all the people in county government who've been working so diligently the last month on this coronavirus crisis, especially the people in public health and the people on my staff and several others throughout the government. I just can't say enough about the dedication that they've shown. There wasn't really, I think, I'm going to let Joanne tell you a little bit about the morgue situation, which we thought was going to be announced tomorrow, but apparently some information was leaked, and there's some stories in the press this evening about that, some of which is correct, some of which is not. So I asked Joanne just to give you an update on what's been going on with that. She has worked, I don't know how many hours the last two weeks trying to make all this happen. And I think it's a good example of how the people in the region, how the various governments in the region can work together to get something done. Joanne?
Sorry. So the hospital systems approached the joint counties in what's called a Mass Fatality Committee. It's just part of the incident command structure that all emergency management agencies use throughout the nation. And they indicated that while it's modeling, and they cannot absolutely ensure, and they certainly hope that it doesn't happen, they were afraid that the incident of death from COVID-19, in addition to the regular pattern of deaths throughout any region, would be such that the funeral homes would be unable to take on the volume of decedents. And they requested that the counties jointly establish a multi-jurisdictional morgue where people would be able to go after they passed away at the hospitals, nursing homes, or their own homes, and be able to be at repose until they were picked up by a funeral home. So based on that, we worked with their model numbers that they gave us, and the jurisdictions together worked out a plan. We found six or seven properties that were a possibility. We were turned away by some, quite rightly. If people have a brand name, they don't necessarily want something along those lines, which is very tragic associated with their brand name in the long run. In the end, a corporation provided a warehouse that they were out of in Earth City without charge for this to be done. And starting last Friday morning, a team that was really made up of a construction manager, a contractor from our experience, and the head of public works from St. Louis County began mounting a massive effort to turn this into a morgue, complete with some space at the front of it that the various faith communities had asked for. So that will be ready by this Friday at the latest. And so people worked all weekend, 12, 14-hour days, preparing this thing. And so we're hopeful that it will be treated respectfully. I'm sure you've seen the pictures coming out of some other cities, and we're really hoping that that is not what happens here. The staff who have worked intimately in this thing have worked ceaselessly to try to understand what the different faith communities require in order for a body to be appropriately handled in accordance with those faiths. And so they've worked really hard to make sure that they're able to meet those requirements, and yet meet all the requirements that the federal government has on us as well. So that has been coming to fruition. And we're also working very closely with some of the funeral homes about procedures for what works for them, to try to get them personal protection equipment when they go to embalm people who have died of COVID or who have been suspected of dying of COVID-19. So unless there's any questions, it's been a long and very big job, but, yes, sir.
What are the numbers? The numbers, are they plateaued yet in the St. Louis region?
Hospitals tell us that they won't plateau till the end of the month.
So what are the numbers right now in St. Louis approximately? Do we know? Like the whole region, not just St. Louis?
Yeah, they're posted by each of the jurisdictions. I did not have a chance to look at them today, so I couldn't tell you.
But isn't the modeling, though, all the modeling that they were showing was like 100% more than what it truly is right now?
I think the modeling was that it was more than it is because they thought it would be moving to a peak faster.
So right now, in the nation, what is it? Is it 40,000 deaths right now, maybe?
Joe, again, I didn't have a chance to look today, so I know it's about, it's a little over 10% in New York City, but obviously, thank God, most of the nation isn't facing what New York City's been facing.
Right, I understand. There are some states that don't have it at all, really, I mean, like Wyoming and those really rural states. But I'm just wondering, you know, me, well, we were talking about this closure, and I guess we can talk about that later, all this other stuff. But at what point do we figure out, because we're not going to, we're going to be totally different than New York and California. We're a totally different environment, you know, especially in St. Charles County. And so I'm just figuring, like, this thing that they're putting together, this warehouse, is this, are the numbers showing that that's a necessity? And I'm asking questions because I don't know what I don't know, okay?
And all I can tell you is that the hospital systems have jointly told the counties it is a necessity.
Yeah, but there are also hospital systems in St. Charles County that are basically vacant. I mean, there's no patients really at all because they're not getting their other normal patients, and they don't have any sick patients either. So I've been told that. So, I mean, I'm just saying that, I just want to make sure that we're following the facts. And I'm not saying that we are, I just don't want to be overreacting when the numbers are not even close to what they were supposed to be.
And the committee, when the hospitals approached them, had almost exactly that same reaction of, what if you're wrong? What if we don't need this thing?
I know, it's always about that.
And then the answer was, well, what if we're right? Where are you going to go with the bodies?
I know, but we have, I understand that, but it's like, it's, there could be an instance of the media frenzy leading the march. And so we have to follow facts and data. And I'm concerned that we're listening to the everyday media, in most cases, is extremely negative and using projections that they're not even coming close to.
And there was no media in the room. It was the hospital systems.
No, no, I'm just saying that that's what they're taking the lead from.
Mr. Chairman?
I think this is the best example of what we've been talking about the last month. We've got to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. I mean, you know, we get this thing, I hope we don't need it at all. But, you know, the good news is at least, we hope most of this cost will be reimbursed by the CARES Act, which is, of course, not a reason to be cavalier with the taxpayers' money. But, you know, up until a week ago, we were basically doing all this on our own dime with no guarantee that we would be reimbursed at all. So that is the one good thing here. You compared us to New York, and you're absolutely right. I mean, it's apples and oranges. But even in the region here, I was telling some of you earlier, there's a real, this situation is different in each of the various jurisdictions. You know, the newspaper has an absolute number every morning of how many cases are here, there, Missouri, Illinois, St. Louis, St. Louis County. If you take that and break it down on a per capita basis and get a percentage, or, I actually broke it down on how many cases per 10,000 people. And just to give you some idea, Illinois has 9.5 cases per 10,000 people statewide. Missouri has four cases per 10,000 people statewide. So Illinois has twice the problem Missouri does at this point. Doesn't mean it won't grow and come together someday. But at this point, in the same way within the region, St. Louis County has 10 cases for every 10,000 people. St. Charles County has seven cases for every 10,000 people. Jefferson County has four cases for every 10,000, and Franklin has three. But the city of St. Louis has 15 for every 10,000. So they have twice...
Right, right.
And that's going to be an interesting issue. When we start opening things back up and everything, are we going to be able to do it everywhere at the same time? Or, you know, again, there's no playbook. So we just have to do the best we can with the information we've got. But my point is, I hope that we can open up sooner if we do, continue to do a good job of keeping those numbers down now. That's all I can really predict, is the better job we do now, the closer we're going to be to opening.
Mr. Cronin?
I think the work that Joanne did for this is well thought out and important to get done. And if you just want to look at the numbers, what's changed in two weeks, at the last council member, last council meeting, we had the number was about 29 cases in the county. I don't think there were any deaths. Now we're at 385 cases and 14 deaths. So in just a period of short two weeks, you know, we've got the numbers of about, multiplied by a factor of about 12. If you extrapolate that out, another two weeks, we could be looking, God forbid, but we could be looking at 5,000 cases and maybe 150 people dead. If that's the case, we need what Joanne's been working on. So I thank you for doing that for the residents of this county, and I hope like hell you don't have to use that building. But rather need it, rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it, and I think that's a good adage for this crisis. So thank you.
Please understand, I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking questions because I know you've been working hard, and I know what you're doing, you're doing it for the right reasons. I get all that. I'm just saying that we need to sometimes pause and make sure that, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying anything that you guys, I think it's all, you're right, you got to do what you got to do, and I get it and prepare for the worst. But sometimes we just got to, you know, not overreact. And I'm not saying we are. I'm not saying that. I just want us to make sure we think everything through, and I'm not saying you're not. Just look at all the data and all the facts, and, you know, we'll figure it out. I guess we'll know in a week or two, maybe, hopefully, but...
I think we learn something every single day, but obviously, the projections for the next two weeks, I think, are going to be pretty vital, you know, at least from what the experts tell us. Mr. White?
Joanne, what was the criteria for these warehouses? Was there, were they refrigerated warehouses? Or did we have to go in and refrigerate them ourselves?
Yes, we have to get them down to 38 degrees.
Okay.
We needed to be able to accommodate the numbers that they were talking about and for, you know, especially for respect and trying to make sure that this didn't turn into just what you were referring to, some sort of media event. We were really looking for something where we could protect the in and out to the building so that the horses and livery services were able to get in there. And, you know, you've seen some ugly pictures coming out of other parts of the country. We were trying to avoid that. And so basically, between the possibilities of who was willing to look at either providing or renting us buildings, we, one of the main sites, it turned out, was under the control of a corporation that had recently vacated it and made it available at no cost, and said, "Do what you need to" to it, and that was their contribution to the effort.
That's wonderful.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Do I have any items to be removed from that consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
I don't have anything to remove, but I'd like to just bring up a few things that I think might be, that people out there watching this might want to know. I did a little checking on the major purchases, and I just want to let you know, the sewer grout truck, okay, is a desperately needed piece of equipment. The old ones wore out. They use this thing to repair the drainage lines that go on through people's backyards to keep their basements from flooding. So that's definitely a needed item. I don't want people to think that we're spending money without careful thought in this time of crisis. The IS system shows 779,000. That's over four years. It's about 170,000, maybe a little more. And that's just to keep our systems from getting malware and have the problems like we had last year. So again, that is something that's very, very needed. You know, other thing, there's also some positive things. It was awfully nice to Centene Corporation to donate bulletproof vests for our police officers. That's a great thing. And also the new transportation professional services, while it shows a million five on here, 90% of that's being reimbursed by federal and state grant money. So we're getting a lot of good research from the University of Missouri for $150,000. So far, as a person, it comes on this council and criticizes a lot of purchases on consent agenda. I thought maybe once I'd like to say that everything was pretty well thought out, and there are no expenditures on this consent agenda that, for items that aren't considered essential. So in that respect, I fully support it, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
We're not pulling out the agenda. Can I just ask one question on the grout truck? There was only one bid, I noticed. Is there a reason for that? I know that's kind of a specialty truck, but...
There was two.
Oh, was there two?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
It was even higher.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. That's fine.
All right, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Next up is resolutions. We have Resolution Number 20-02.
Resolution 20-02, sponsored by council as a whole. A resolution adopting the St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, 2020 through 2025, as updated in 2019.
Do we have any questions or comments on this resolution? See, seeing none, let's call the roll.
Resolution 20-02, sponsored by council as a whole. A resolution adopting the St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, 2020 through 2025, as updated in 2019. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 20-02 passes. Next up is an emergency bill, Number 4841.
Emergency Bill 4841, requested by Demetrius Chansey Chapman, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements of memoranda of understanding between St. Charles County and other governments, including local, state, and our municipal governments, due to the COVID-19 state of emergency.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Okay, seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
Emergency Bill Number 4841. An emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements or memoranda of understanding between St. Charles County and other governments, including local, state, and our municipal governments, due to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Emergency Bill Number 4841 passes. Next up are bills for final passage, starting with Bill Number 4832.
Bill Number 4832, an ordinance vacating a portion of Old Duello Road pursuant to Section 228.160 RSMO and approving a real property exchange agreement related thereto.
Questions or comments on Bill Number 4832? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
Bill Number 4832, an ordinance vacating a portion of Old Duello Road pursuant to Section 228.160 RSMO and approving a real property exchange agreement... 228.160 RSMO, and approving a real property exchange agreement related thereto. Council Member Ehlum?
Yes.
Council Member Hollander?
Yes.
Council Member Hammond?
Yes.
Council Member Schneider?
Yes.
Council Member Cronin?
Yes.
Council Member Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 4832 passes. Next up is Bill Number 4833.
Bill Number 4833, requested by Demetrius Chancy Chapman, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement for financial assistance, grant agreement number 2020003, between St. Charles County and the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District, for receipt of funds in an amount up to $60,000.
Any questions or comments on Bill Number 4833? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
Bill Number 4833. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement for financial assistance, grant agreement number 2020003, between St. Charles County and the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District, for receipt of funds in an amount up to $60,000. Council Member Hollander?
Yes.
Council Member Hammond?
Yes.
Council Member Schneider?
Yes.
Council Member White?
Yes.
Council Member Cronin?
Yes.
Council Member Brazel?
Yes.
Council Member Ehlum?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 4833 passes. Now, we have bills for introduction, beginning with Bill Number 4837.
Bill Number 4837, requested by Michael Harlbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from a agricultural district to our, our single-family residential district, as per application, RZ 20-01.
Mr. Cronin?
I had a nice, long talk with Mr. Dubre this afternoon, and he was not aware of the bill that we passed two weeks ago, requiring less development costs for five-acre lot developments. That being said, he's developed ground before in the Forestale area, and was pretty happy to hear about the bill that we passed two weeks ago. So, at this point in time, he's crunching the numbers to see if that works. But this is kinda critical for, simply because he actually owns 180 acres there. It's absolutely beautiful ground, situated between Forestale and Winfield, but far enough away that he'll, won't be years and years before sewers ever get that way. So, whether this ends up going to three acres or five acres, it'll be one or the other. And Mr. Dubre's working on that, and I think this new bill that we passed two weeks ago will help him, because his development costs will go quite a bit, could go down considerably if he keeps it at five-acre tracks. So, yeah, I just wanted to know, me and Mr. Dubre are working on it, and he's crunching the numbers on it right now.
Any other questions or comments on Bill Number 4837?
Mr. Dubre may be available through, online right now, if he wants to have any comments. I don't know if you wanna ask him or not, but I do believe he was, he was connected.
Does anyone have? Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Dubre, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, yes. Mr. Dubre, would you like to explain to us a little bit about the Bill Number 4837 and, and your request for rezoning?
Yes, I can. I guess, pretty much like Mr. Cronin mentioned, you know, the letter that I sent in, that was read earlier, really, if we had a choice, we would like to go back to the three acres, because it makes it more flexible for people who, even retired people, who may not want or need five acres of ground. And it makes it not only more affordable for them, but less to take care of. It makes it better all the way around, because of the fact that, dividing it up, it gives you more options. We're not planning on doing anything likely for one to two years. And we're older, so I, if, everything's kinda questionable at this time, with the virus and everything. But, it is, as Mr. Cronin said, a beautiful piece of property. We, for years, have not wanted to see it develop into a small-lot subdivision, which it does have some potential, since Forestale has two, we're on Highway W. So, I'd appreciate it if the council considers the request. It would be a, honestly, a first step. If everything works out, and we decide to go forward with, if we have the option, a three-acre subdivision, we would like to expand that, to take up the remainder of the property we have here, and make it either way into a beautiful subdivision, a beautiful area that people would be proud to live in.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I think that somewhat explains it.
Any questions for this gentleman from the council? Okay, seeing none, thank you, sir, for your comments. And this bill will obviously come before us again two weeks from now. Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
Next bill for introduction is Bill Number 4838.
Bill Number 4838, requested by Craig Tackowski, sponsored by Nancy Schneider. An ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement Amendment Number Three, Airport Improvement Program, Grant Project 16-111A-2, to extend the project time period to allow for completion of the work for design runway electrical lighting system, rehabilitation and new vault at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field.
Okay. Questions or comments on Bill Number 4838? Seeing none, we move on to Bill Number 4839 for introduction.
Bill Number 4839, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance approving agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for improvements needed to reduce congestion on I-70 from Cave Springs Boulevard to Fairgrounds Road.
Questions or comments on Bill 4839?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had a conversation with someone I know with MoDOT today, because I saw this, this headline in the paper today. It said, "Traffic Drop in Perils Road Funding." And basically, it's talking about the fact that, that people driving less, less fuel taxes being collected, and it's gonna affect road, MoDOT's future funding. Part of that future funding is a project that's near and dear in my district, which is the fixing the railroad overpass at Winfield. So, with every one of these projects that we approve like this, when I look at this, this is $10 million of county transportation sales tax money, that Mr. Elman had mentioned one meeting, how millions of dollars that we've put into roads that probably should be paid for by the federal or state government, okay? That being said, I, I went to Mo, the fellow I knew at MoDOT, and I said, "What can we do to help you guys help us?" And the letter that I, I left, you folks all have a copy of, is a letter that is, that's written by Patrick McKenna, the president of the, he's the, he's the Director of Missouri Department of Transportation, but he's also like a trade organization, the president of the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Right now, our congressmen and senators are debating whether the second wave of, of COVID legislation bailout, or bailout, or benefit packages should tackle roads. The first $2 billion, or $2 trillion that went through was nothing for roads. So, right now, they're debating it. The person I spoke with at MoDOT said it would be really critical, if we could, to reach out to our, our congressmen and senators, and ask them to support additional funding for roads in this COVID response bill that's, that's clearing through Congress. So, the letters I gave you folks right now, talk about that. If you have the opportunity to talk to your congressman or senator and ask them to support this, it could yield significant paybacks to St. Charles County and keep our road projects on track.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments on Bill Number 4839? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Bill Number 4840 for introduction.
Bill Number 4840, requested by Kurt Friss, sponsored by council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute form intergovernmental agreements from governmental agencies to use the County Emergency Operations Center at 1400 TRU's Boulevard of Fallon as a continuity of operations site.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4840? Okay, seeing none, are there any bills to be removed from the table? Okay, seeing none, we do have announcements miscellaneous. Anyone have any, any announcements or comments miscellaneous?
Just a comment.
Yes, Mr. White.
I haven't had a haircut since this whole thing started. So, I think if people out there that can afford it, think of the people that, that do your personal grooming, your beautician, stylists, your barbers, your manicurists. If you could just drop a check in the mail to them to try to get them through, I think it'd be a big help. And I can't wait to get a haircut.
I, I don't, I, I don't, well, the cat out of the bag, but two weeks ago, I went to Target and bought the last clippers, and my wife is now cutting my hair again.
She's good. Can I come over?
The barber shop in Winfield is still open.
Is it?
Yeah, so if you wanna drive to Winfield, John, you can still get a haircut in Winfield.
I think you're looking pretty dapper, though, Mr. White, that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I also mention, mention that this is the week that we honor dispatchers and 911 operators throughout the nation. And believe me, these folks have been doing yeoman's work in our dispatch center, including keeping all kinds of statistics and information to feed the public health system about calls for service that may relate to COVID.
Yes.
I have one other thing.
Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I happened to run in O'Fallon, into Chris Hunt at O'Fallon, and ask him how things were going. And he said, "Thank God for the new, new EOC building." He said, and I'm sure Joanne would say that, he said, "This has really worked the way they planned it to work when they built it, and we'd be in a lot of trouble without it." So, he, he said, "Everything is going as smooth as can be," and that, that new building and the new chief are making things go really easy. So, kudos to all those folks that are, are doing it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, requests for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.